Oh, I love that cup.
That was nice drinking.
Yeah.
How you feeling, JJ?
Can you hear me?
Yep. Can you hear us?
Yeah.
You look like you don't feel well, JJ.
Do I? Oh, thanks a lot.
No, you look great.
I see myself on the big screen up back there.
You sound even better.
Every time I fly, I get something. I don't know what's wrong with me.
Is it the first one that's continuing?
Yeah, the first one is continued.
Okay, so JJ, you're off the hook until nine, 10, if you want to be. Go hydrate or something. For the court reporter's benefit, what we're going to do is we'll open the hearings at nine and then we'll just announce that the first hearing is being continued to a later date. And then we'll be off again until nine, 10. Okay?
Okay, sounds good.
All right. And don't hesitate to interrupt if you can't hear somebody or like somebody needs to spell their names. It's you're sort of like the Wizard of Oz. Like, we know you're there, but because you're not in the room, people don't recognize that somebody's out there who needs to know what they're saying, so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Okay. On here? Sorry, it's exactly nine o'clock and we need to call our hearings order. All right, good morning, everybody. This is the time and place set for the zoning board of adjustment for the city of Pittsburgh hearings on October 16th, 2025. The first case of the morning is zone case 124 of 2025 for 4779 Liberty Avenue. If there is anybody attending who wanted to comment with respect to the case on Liberty Avenue, that case has been rescheduled to November 6th at 9:00 AM. So we will not be having a hearing this morning for 4779 Liberty Avenue. Come back to see us on November 6th at 9:00 AM. So for anybody who's waiting for the next case, it's scheduled for nine, 10, and we will be back at nine, 10 to hear that case. So we're going to put up a "we'll be back shortly" sign. Thank you. All right. Have us audible here. Okay, we're going to go back on the record here. We're getting close to the nine, 10 scheduled time for the next hearing, which is zone case 132 of 2025 for 6933 Greenwood Street. And we have, is it Michael Fine?
Yes.
And do we have, who is it that you're expecting to attend?
Dan McDowell, who's the landscape architect, and he is on the line. He's there.
So we'll admit him as a panelist. Dan McDowell, you're about to get a notice asking you to join as a panelist. Please join as a panelist. Is that just the two of you then?
Yes.
Okay, now it's officially nine, 10. So do both of you swear or affirm that the information that you'll provide to the board this morning will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. And Daniel, could you read the case in, please?
This is zone case 132 of 2025 for 6933 Greenwood Street. The application is for ornamental trellises and the requesting variances from section 903.03.b. A 30-foot front setback is required and zero foot is requested. And a five-foot side setback is required and zero foot is requested.
All righty, so could you introduce yourself at the record? And we have your materials up. And please remember that we have a court reporter who is not in the room. She's here virtually. But if you switch between speakers, please say who you are for the benefit of the court reporter.
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Fine. I'm the owner of the property that we're going to be discussing today. And if you could just go back to the first slide. Okay, so an advance at one. So Dan and I are going to do a tag team presentation here. And we're going to begin with a few introductions of ourselves. We're going to talk about the project background and the exact variance issues. And then we're going to present.
Not to get you off your schedule, but can you just start by showing us where the property is? And so that we have a frame of reference?
Sure. Can you advance? So these are some images of the property. You're looking at it from the perspective of 6933 Greenwood Street. So you're looking from front to the back of the property. And on the right side, there's a neighbor. On the left side, there's a neighbor. This is a residential street in Morningside neighborhood of Pittsburgh.
Do your exhibits include an aerial view of the area? So we can put it in that context?
We do not have an aerial view.
That's fine. We can look it up. It's just it's one of those things that's helpful to see what's around it and what streets are around it. But carry on. Okay.
All right, so can we just go back to the beginning, please?
Sure.
So, all right, next slide. All right, so I'm going to say a little bit about myself and then I'm going to turn it over to Dan to introduce himself. My name is Michael Fine. As I mentioned, I'm the owner. I am a recently retired physician. I grew up in Western Pennsylvania, did my training here, worked as a clinician and a researcher at both the University of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh VA Healthcare System. I'm an avid gardener and I've really enjoyed gardening at my home in the East End in Highland Park, which is about a mile and a half from here. And in retirement, I really see gardening and creating this space as something that's going to be a major project for me.
If you were in England, it would be an allotment. Except it would be a big allotment.
Yes.
Okay. Carry on.
So that's a little bit about me. And I'll turn it over to Dan to introduce himself. I've been working with Dan on this project since I bought the property in April.
I mean, just for both of you, the background's helpful, but we have to resolve the variance issues. And I understand it's for trellises, which would be accessory structures, which are not going to, which the proposal is to have them not comply with the setback requirements. So we need to have, to focus on that. If you wouldn't mind.
As soon as we finish these introductions, we'll get directly to that point.
Yeah, so this is Dan McDowell speaking. I am a landscape architect, the owner of DM Landscape Design. Michael hired me and we put together a full site design plan that was approved through zoning. We have the building permit for all of that. These are just two additions that fit in with the overall design. So if we scroll down, I can start to get through the overall design. Existing conditions, the property has been in this shape for some time now. There was an existing house that had a fire and was demolished. Keep going there.
Can I just add one thing, Dan? Dan, can I just say?
Again, if you're going to switch voices, you need to.
I will. Michael Fine, I just want to point out one thing. Go back. On the far right, I just wanted to show you that we posted the placard on the date requested for this hearing, just to get that on record. Okay, go ahead, Dan. I'm sorry.
Part of the exhibits. Thank you. Carry on.
So this is Dan McDowell again. So what you're looking at here is the overall site plan. When you looked at the Greenwood Street is on the left-hand side there in plan view. So the first image on the upper left on the previous page was looking directly into this, sort of centered on what is the entrance path. This was the approved plan. You can see there are two center trellises and there is a shed in the back. But this is the plan, as I mentioned, that has been approved. If you go to the second, the next page, what you can see is the trellis design and details that were approved for the center trellises. What we're trying to do is create consistency with the visual aspects of the design. The next page really is the fence that was at the full perimeter of the site. What you're looking at, the upper left-hand corner, is the fence panel inside of one of the two trellises that are being hopefully approved for the zoning variance. The one next to it is the typical six-foot fence that is beyond the 15-foot setback for the fence. And then the front fence is on the lower right-hand corner.
And maybe this is my misunderstanding. The agenda says that the application is for ornamental trellises, but what you're saying is that you want to enclose this property with a privacy fence?
The privacy fence has been approved in the original design. All I'm showing, I'm showing the connections of the design details with the trellises that are going to be part of this overall design. So if you go to the next page.
Thank you.
Yep. The next page is showing the exact same design. The two clouded areas are the trellises that are in this zoning variance. So there's the front trellis, which is within the 30-foot setback, and the side trellis on the lower portion of this page, which is within the five-foot setback.
I see.
Now, these connect directly into the fence.
So you're not, it's not like you're proposing a stockade around the property? That this is, there would be open fencing or something that would comply with the zoning on Greenwood Street, but the only component that would not would be the trellis, which is more structural?
Correct. Yeah, it's sort of like an entrance feature into the garden space. So if you go to the next page here, what you can see are those, the trellis designs for the front, which is on the right-hand side, and the side trellis, which is on the left there. So what you can see, really talking about the details and all those different elements, these are the same design of the center trellises that were approved. So really, it's just kind of adding unique features to the design, but they are within that setback. So those are, those are the two items that are in question right now.
Well, so the, a 30-foot setback would be required for the structure in the front and a five-yard, I mean, a five-foot setback would be required for the one on the side. So can you, what? What would be the width of the trellis on Greenwood Street? I mean, how much of, as compared to the width of the lot?
Yeah, so we have a 50-foot lot. And this, ultimately, the front one is about, I want to say about, with the top detail, is about six and a half feet wide. It's a, it is a 34, 35 and a half inch gate that's enclosed in the middle of that. So it's really, it's not, it's not a large structure. I believe the one on the east, the side portion is about a little over, around eight feet, give or take. That's the full width of the detailed design of the upper portions of the trellises.
That's maybe 120-foot lot or something like that?
100, 100 feet deep.
Okay. So it appeared from the photographs that there is an immediate neighbor on the side where the trellis is proposed? Is, and have you had discussions with that neighbor about having?
Excuse me, I will, I will address that when I give my arguments. So do you want me to do it right now?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I think it's the next, the next piece there.
Okay. Can we advance? All right, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna skip ahead. As part of preparation for this hearing and just in courtesy to my neighbors, and if any of you are on, thank you for joining and thank you for your support. I went door to door, basically to everyone on the block. It included my neighbors to the left and the right of the property and the neighbors of the neighbors on the same side of the street, as well as everyone on the opposite side of the street. And I went to 10 households, talked to 15 individuals, had a little bit of a petition, explained the project, explained the zoning variances. Everyone was highly supportive of the project and they had no issues with the zoning variances. And what I'll show you as part of this presentation, as I go through it, is their actual signatures and their street addresses, so.
Well, that's, again, we'll, we'll take that as part of the record, but we don't need to go through that in any detail. One question I have is about the the structure that had been on the property previously. Do you have any information as to whether it complied with the 30-foot setback? Do the other houses on the street comply with the 30-foot front setback?
I can, this is Dan. Let me try and open a file here on my side to try to get the dimensions.
Yeah, I mean.
I just want to verify dimensions here. Now, there, there. Now, their, their front porches definitely are within.
Well, porches are accessory structures, so.
The house to the eastern side of the site is just about eighteen feet off of the front setback. And the one on the left is just a little bit further back. And street view images of the building, the previous house, it was abutting the eastern property line.
Okay, so that, again, those are, that's sometimes why it's helpful for us to see the aerial view so we can see everything in context. So what you're saying is that there, do you know when the, the house was demolished when the fire happened?
I do, if I can speak for the record, Michael Fine speaking. The house caught on fire in 2020.
Okay.
And it was demolished, I think, a year or two after that.
But, all right, and, and again, this is accessory structure. What I'm trying to understand is if the, what you're proposing is generally consistent with what had been there before in terms of the streetscape, so. Okay, but you're saying, and maybe this is for Mr. McDowell, but if you could, if you don't have an exhibit which shows how the setbacks for the other structures that are proximate, that might be helpful for us to, to see because if this is, like if other houses are closer to the, to Greenwood Street than would be permitted, then we can take that into consideration as well.
Yeah, so if you scroll up, this is Dan speaking. If you, if you scroll up to the plan view, if you go right back down, go down, I would go down to the second plan view, next page, right there. So if you look, the, the houses, you can see kind of where the text is right there on the bottom where it says twenty four inch root zone. That, that is the house footprint, which is closer than five feet to the property line, which is just above it. And the left side of that is the porch that is in, within the thirty foot setback. The same is to the northern side of the sheet. The house is about ten inches off of the property line and the front porch is within, the house and front porch are within the thirty foot setback.
Okay.
And, and I can add that that's the case for pretty much every house on that block.
Well, and that's, again, we'll, we'll let you supplement the record, but I think it would be helpful for us to see the aerial view so that we can see that context.
Happy to do that.
Okay. Are there any other materials that you want to bring to the board's attention? And we'll accept the full exhibit packet as part of the record, but.
Can I just present my arguments in favor of the zoning ordinance?
If you've written them down, then we don't need to, just do so briefly.
Okay, can you advance to that, that slide? One, the garden's going to enhance the beauty of Greenwood Street in Morningside. The trellises, as Dan already mentioned, are an important architectural components that add aesthetic value and functionality to the garden site. It's likely to, the garden is likely to, including the trellises, and increase local property values. I'm a physician, I believe in evidence. Evidence shows that city green spaces are associated with improved mental and physical health, improved air and water quality, increased neighborhood safety and greater social cohesion. The trellises do not pose any environmental hazards or other risks for residents or pedestrians. And finally, all neighbors along the block, including those closest to the property, support the project as a whole and requested zoning variances.
All right, well, thank you very much. Are there, and was that the full exhibit packet?
No, they're, I mean, if you go. Yeah, so just one more. Those are all the people that signed it with their address. And as you can see, they're all of the surrounding neighbors, both sides, right and left, as well as across the street, who have a direct line of this trellis.
Well, and again, if you could supplement the record with an aerial view, that would, that would help our context to understand.
Okay.
Ms. Burton Falk, any other questions?
No additional questions, madam.
Mr. Richardson, any questions of the applicant?
I have no questions.
Okay, do we have anybody attending either in person or virtually who would like to comment with respect to the application for sixty nine thirty three Greenwood Street? I am seeing no hands raised, so thank you very much for coming in this morning. We appreciate it.
And we'll send the materials to Daniel.
Very good, thank you so much. And we'll, we'll accept the exhibits as part of the record. The board has forty five days to issue a decision from the close of the hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. The next case of the morning is Zone Case one thirty three of twenty twenty five for fourteen oh two Sheffield Street. Do we have the applicant for that, Jason Esser? Is that? We have Mr. Esser on the line. Mr. Esser, you should get a notice saying you're being asked to join as a panelist. Please join us as a panelist.
Good morning, can you hear me?
We can, are you attending on your own or is there somebody joining you?
My wife is also online there, Leah Homan.
We see Leah Esser?
Yes.
All right, can we let her in as well?
You can let her in, I may, I may do most of the speaking, just so we don't have to bounce back and forth.
Well, that, it's easier not to bounce back and forth, but if somebody's going to say something, I want to get them sworn in to begin with, so.
Absolutely.
Do each of you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right.
Madam Chair, prior to reading in, I'm going to let you know that I'll recuse from this.
Okay, so Ms. Burton Falk is recusing from this matter. Mr. Richardson isn't in the room, but he's hearing the case as well. So we have a quorum. Mr. Shepke, could you read the case in, please?
This is Case one thirty three of twenty twenty five for fourteen oh two Sheffield Street. Their request is for a four foot high privacy fence. They're requesting a variance from section nine twelve dot oh four dot K one. Fences in the exterior side yard must be open and a closed fence is proposed.
All right, Mr. Esser, we have your materials. Could you explain what you're proposing here?
Sure, good morning. So my name is Jason Esser. My wife Leah Esser is here as well. We are the owners of fourteen oh two Sheffield. Ultimately, we're, we're seeking a variance for the opacity requirements. We do need a fence to improve safety, privacy and something that is compatible with the neighborhood and the aesthetic standard, so we're trying to stay within that. But it is technically a little bit more opaque than the, than the requirements themselves.
Okay, can you, since that's, I mean, like, we understand that people want privacy, but there's a reason why privacy fences aren't permitted. So can you explain what it is that you're proposing?
Sure, so let's, let's go down to slide three there real quick. There is a correction that I need to make here. First of all, you can see we're in, in Manchester. The area is owned R two H. Up in the upper overview section, I have noted there that it's constructed of, or would be constructed of, two and a half inch pickets with a one and a half inch gap. We're actually looking for one and a half inch pickets and a half inch gap, as is identified on the, the drawing or the sketch on slide thirteen, so we can go to that. I mean, ultimately, if we run the calculation, that opacity, really, it's seventy five percent opaque versus twenty five percent transparent. At a four foot elevation, you can still see over it and it doesn't necessarily cut off any, any visible access when you're pulling up to the intersection, since we are on a corner. So if you actually.
And, and yet we don't know where the property is. So let's, before you get into the argument about the fence that you're proposing, why don't you show where you're proposing to put it?
Yep, so let's, let's go down, it's exactly where I was going, go down to slide seven here.
And we, we note that you posted the notice, but let's.
Yep, so you can see we're on the corner of Sheffield and Manhattan. We're actually, the photo's taken sitting on Sheffield Street with Manhattan on the right hand side. The existing ornamental fence there on the right side of our home will stay in place. We're not planning on taking that or the columns out. And then if you go down one more slide, you'll see that, that is the side along Manhattan Street. And there's the portion of our property that extends from the last column there to the right on our parking pad. And then we'd be looking to put fencing along the parking pad on the backside of our property, between it and the two parcels that we do not own. Right? If you go down to slide ten, slide ten, there is the plan view for the property itself. Really, the items that we're identifying are the orange noted sections where the fence will pick up on that last column, run across, you know, to the, that would be to the north or to the right hand side, across our parking pad and then back to tie into the fence for the adjacent properties on the left of our home or, or to the west. And again, slides eleven and twelve give a little bit of a different picture or view where the fence would go. Right, there's the existing fencing to remain, new wood fence location. And then if you go down one further to slide thirteen, that is the, the drawing showing the four foot high fence, correctly noted with the one and a half inch picket and the half inch spacing. And then the seventy five percent opaque versus twenty five percent open or transparent. This would be made of wood. If you go down one slide further, that's just sort of an example of what we're trying to create with the, the appearance of the fence. I think that fence itself is six foot or, or maybe five, five and a half foot. We're, we're only going four foot, so it'll be a little bit lower.
I was gonna say, that doesn't look like a four foot fence. So is there a reason why you can't continue the open wrought iron and brick that's, that you already have in place on the site? I mean, what, what, what's the basis for the request for having a different type of fencing since the fence that's there complies with the requirements?
The, the fence that there, to recreate that at this point is cost prohibitive as well as doesn't, doesn't necessarily provide the, the privacy that we're looking for. We are looking for a little bit of privacy on the backside of the home there in that side yard, just so there is a section that you can set up, whether it's a hammock and relax and not have the, you know, pedestrian traffic walking past you and, and peeking in and seeing you on a nice summer afternoon.
Well, and again, that, the zoning requirements exist because they do, not, not to ensure your privacy. But can you tell us a little bit about what's across Manhattan Street from the property and what is on the opposite side of the fence along the driveway?
So when you're saying the opposite side, so on the other side of Manhattan Street?
Yeah, who's going to be looking at the fence on both sides?
So if you go actually down to slide twenty one, we've, we've got some of the neighborhood context images that represent, right, so that, that is our neighbor across the street, Ms. Dolores. She, she as well has a corner lot with a side yard that is, you know, somewhat protected by a fairly opaque fence. Slide down one further. Actually, this is over on north, so it's not going to show what the other property owners on Sheffield have or would be looking at.
Who is the immediate neigh, who is the immediate neighbor on Manhattan Street? Who's on the, who's on this?
There's a property owner on Manhattan Street, but the, the home is vacant. It's actually been vacant as long as we've been there.
Okay. All right. Are there other renderings or materials that you want us to take a look at?
I think no other renderings that we included, just the one. But, I mean, you can, you can scroll through the record there and in some of the other context properties. Just showing what is available. I mean, you've got some other properties there that have ornamental fences abutted to a wood fence, similar to what we're trying to do.
This is Leah Esser. I think it's helpful to see page fifteen too, which is the project rendering of how everything ties together and what the end goal is for this property.
Right.
And, and my next question was what about landscaping? So is there some intent to have landscaping in addition to the fencing along that property line?
Correct, there is. This is our, our end goal. We've been here now six years. This was a property that sat vacant for twenty years and we rehabbed and brought back to life. We do have four children and they are young and, and having this open, you know, having the incomplete fence has been tricky in that regard.
Well, and I, I guess the, if you've made it clear that you're not requesting a variance from the height requirements, just the opacity requirements, the height of the fence would be consistent with the columns that are already there?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions. Mr. Richardson, do you have any other questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, and we have Ms. Dolores in the office, in the, she came, she came down for the hearing. Did you want to comment with respect to the application? Okay, all right. So we have an observer, but not an objector, so thank you for coming in. Is there anybody appearing virtually who would like to comment with respect to this application? I'm seeing no hands raised. So the board does have forty five days to issue a decision. We are going to close the record and accept all of your exhibits today. And thank you for being here this morning.
I do, I think I do need to provide an update because there are a couple of, of sections or areas that I still kept, I think on slide eighteen, the fence design, four feet in height with one and a half inch pickets and half inch picket instead of the two and a half and the one and a half inch spacing.
If, if you want to submit that correction to Mr. Shepke, he would be happy to make sure that we correct accordingly.
Okay, I will do so.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We need to get Ms. Burton Falk back. The next case of the morning is Zone Case one thirty six of twenty twenty five for three sixteen McKinley Street. Who's, who's, thank you very much for coming in. Come on up.
You can stand over.
You have to come up to the microphone, sorry. And can you give us your name, please?
First name Justin, last name Davidson.
Okay, and you're the only person who's going to present on this application?
Yes.
And do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Shepke, can you read the case in, please?
This is Case one thirty six of twenty twenty five for three sixteen McKinley Street. The application is for the use of a fifteen foot by sixteen foot deck in the front yard. And they're requesting a variance from section nine oh three dot oh three dot D. A fifteen foot front setback is required and zero foot is requested. And a five foot side setback is required and one foot is requested.
All right, we have your materials up. Can you explain, so you constructed the deck without getting zoning approvals? Is that, okay. Oh, boy. And that goes right up to the sidewalk?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So how long has it been there and it? There, there's nothing about that that complies with the zoning ordinances. You're not, the decks aren't supposed to be in the front yard. Can you explain what your reasoning is for why you should have a deck in your front yard, but it's completely in violation of the zoning code? Nobody else has one?
Well, I wasn't even aware that I couldn't build the porch out. Like, I think in like two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, I did a wraparound deck from down the side around the back and I had got a permit, so.
This is the front?
Yeah, so once I realized that the yard was too small, my kids really didn't have anywhere to play. And as far as their safety, I didn't want them like running out in the streets. Cars go up and down this street. Far as my knowledge, they petitioned to try to get a stop sign put in the middle of the street.
That doesn't explain the deck. I mean, why wouldn't fencing accomplish the same goal?
The yard, there, basically, there was no yard.
Well, but again, this is a deck in the front yard. I mean, it, I, I don't know how to get past that this isn't permitted. I mean, what, why, like, why couldn't you put a fence around the front where the deck is instead of constructing the deck?
I had a fence at one point. And like I said, like, they, like, the way that the fence and everything was set up. I just felt that it would be more safe and easier for me to extend the porch out. That way the kids had somewhere to sit, play, and other things like that. I didn't think it was an issue until someone, I guess, called 311, complained about the deck.
Well, or an inspector saw it and recognized that it doesn't comply with the zoning requirements.
The inspector came past when I was in the process of doing the deck. He actually asked me, did I do work, did I do this type of work and can I do some work for him? So I didn't think nothing of it.
Well. Um, so, can you explain a little bit about the street and where people's porches end and what else, what, what features are in the front yards of other properties in the area?
Um, well, on that particular side of the street, everyone else has, like I said, like the little small yard. They might have hedges around their yard, but that's pretty much it. The two houses beside me, one is condemned, one is vacant. Yeah, that, that house has been vacant for about seven years, maybe eight.
That. What's the, what, what was the, was that the rear of the house? What, what was that last photo? Sorry.
That's, that's the rear of the condemned house.
Oh, okay.
I think that's 318, if I'm not mistaken.
Mm-hmm.
That's the front of it.
And this is on the side of you?
Yes, that's to, if you're standing in front of it, that's to the right of me.
And what's to the left?
That would be 314, which is this house. That's, it has been vacant for about seven, eight years.
What's across the street?
I'm sorry?
What's across the street?
Um, those houses, they don't really have a front yard. It's on like a hillside. So their, their houses like sit up on a hill, so they really don't have a front yard. It's more or less like a slope type of deal.
Do it steps or?
Yeah, there's step, there's concrete steps that lead up to most of them.
Oh, dear. This is another one where an aerial view would help, but, um, is there, are there other things that you want us to take a look at?
I'm not. The front porch was just really the main thing. Like, outside of that, I, I feel like it doesn't bother anyone. So I, when someone called 311, I was surprised. Like, I don't bother none of my neighbors. I don't, like, never been an issue.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I mean, 311 calls can come from anything, but this, the accessory structures in the front yard like this just aren't permitted. So that's, I, the, it's, it's sort of a struggle for us to, um, what, what we have to find that is there something different about this property than any other property that makes sense for this to be allowed on one property where it wouldn't be allowed anywhere else. So that's, that's what we're struggling with. Is there, is there anything else that you want us to take a look at?
No.
Okay. Um, Ms. Burton Falk, do you have any other questions?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
All right. Uh, Mr. Richardson, any questions of the applicant here?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody attending who would like to comment with respect to the, um, application for 316 McKinley Street? I am seeing no hands raised. So thank you for coming, coming in this morning and we will take a look at it.
All right, thank you.
The, the board has 45 days to issue a decision. We try to be faster than that.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, um, so the last case of the morning is zone case 109 of 2025 for 5118 Beeler Street. We have a bunch of people in the room. We have a bunch of people online. So could the applicant team make their way up to the microphone at the front here? And just for anybody who's attending online and attending in the room, we will let the applicant team make their presentation first. And then we will turn first to the people in the room for comments or questions, and then we will, uh, turn to anybody attending online for additional comments or questions. So who've we got here? Who needs to be sworn in from the applicant team?
Um, good morning. My name is Kevin McKeegan. Everybody in the front here needs to be sworn in.
All right. I don't care if you stand up or not, but do you swear or affirm that the information that you'll provide to the board this morning will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. McKeegan, so we'll, we're gonna let Daniel read the case in and then we'll let you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
This is on case 109 of 2025 for 5118 Beeler Street. The application's for the construction of a three-story structure for religious assembly limited use. Um, the relief request is a little bit different than what's listed on the agenda, so I'll read it in. Um, they're requesting a special exception pursuant to section 911.02 to allow the religious assembly limited use, a variance from section 925.06 to allow a 20.25 rear setback, a variance from section 912.02.a. and 903.03.b.2 to allow a zero-foot front setback for parking and loading, a special exception pursuant to section 916 to allow a 15-foot, to waive the 15-foot residential compatibility interior side, side setback requirement, a, uh, to waive the 30-foot residential compatibility trash area setback and the 15-foot residential compatibility parking and loading setback. Uh, the agenda lists that they're requesting a special exception for off-site parking, but I understand that they're actually going to be, be requesting a special exception to review a alternative access and parking plan.
Mr. McKeegan, does that match up with
It does.
your view of the relief being requested?
It does, thank you.
So, we're adding in, um, alternative access instead of the special exception for off-site parking, a residential compatibility for a dumpster and um, issues related to the front yard parking that's proposed, um, which is 903.03.b.2, as well as the 912 for the zero-foot setback. All right. Daniel, that generally close?
Yeah.
All right.
There's some other residential compatibility setback, so for the structure as well.
For the structures.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we will get into all of that.
Well, all right. Um, carry on, Mr. McKeegan.
Thank you.
We have your materials up.
Great, thank you. My name is Kevin McKeegan. Uh, for the court reporter, that's M C K E E G I N. Uh, I'm with the law firm of Meyer, Unkovic, and Scott here in Pittsburgh, and I am representing the applicant, Habad of Carnegie Mellon University Incorporated. Uh, this is a request by Habad of CMU to establish a place of religious, religious assembly uh, at 5118 Beeler Street. Uh, the property in question is located in an R1DL zoning district. Uh, under the use code table, uh, places of religious assembly are allowed in that district by special exception, a form of permitted use, uh, with requirements for that laid out at code section 91104A53. Uh, to put the proposal in context, uh, we're starting with some aerial views of the neighborhood. Uh, the first image up there is the block and lot map. Uh, in these images, uh, 5118 Beeler Street is block and lot 52R190. Um, Rabbi Silverman, who we testifying, who heads Habad of CMU, uh, lives next door at 5120 Beeler Street, which is block and lot 52R188.
But that, but R188 is not part of the application?
That's correct. Just, just for.
It's just a location.
Yep.
Okay.
Exactly, thank you. Um, uh, if we could go to the next slide, please. This is just a Google Earth image, uh, kind of, uh, duplicative of the, uh, block and lot map. Uh, this one's a little bit more focused on, uh, the location of the property relative to Carnegie Mellon University, which we think is important. Next slide, please, Daniel. So on this image, uh, 5118 Beeler Street, uh, the site of the proposal is the, um, a red brick house in the center of the photograph. Uh, we've, uh, provided some directional, um, indications on this photograph. Forbes Avenue, if you're standing in front of 5118 Beeler Street, would be to the right, and Wilkins Avenue would be further uphill to the left.
To further orient the board, um, what's the parcel? I mean, there's a driveway.
Ah, thank you.
With a driveway on the left side.
Our driveway on the left side is 5120. The driveway that's vacant on the right side is 5118.
Okay. So, all right, just, again, try not to talk over my questions.
I'm sorry.
From McKeegan, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, that is, um, all right, so that, the, the parcel includes a driveway currently?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you.
So if we can go to the next slide, Daniel. Uh, this, this is just to focus on Rabbi Silverman's home at 5120, same orientation as the previous slide. Uh, and then the next slide, Daniel, uses just some more, uh, street images. Um, the proposal in question is to replace the house at 5118 Beeler uh, with a new structure to house, uh, Habad of CMU uh, as a place of worship, gathering, and study. If we could go to exhibit four, Daniel. This is a rendering of what's proposed, um, uh, from, um, uh, from a view of, at Beeler Street. Uh, next slide, Daniel. So the parcel in question, as are most of the parcels in this neighborhood, is relatively small, uh, which makes compliance with, uh, dimensional standards, especially the residential compatibility, difficult.
Uh, well, Mr. Mr. McKeegan, are you saying that the parcel is consistent with all the other parcels on the street?
Uh, I actually haven't.
The dimensions are.
I haven't actually looked at all the other parcels, but from the block and lot map, they appear to be small.
Okay, so, I mean, with dimensions of approximately 120 by 35, something like that?
Correct, okay. So just to orient the board, on this slide, the, um, uh, light blue is the area that, uh, could legally be constructed without reference to the residential compatibility standards. The dark blue strip in the middle is what's left over once you apply the residential compatibility standards. We will be requesting dimensional variances, and those are depicted on the next slide. Lisa Carver from, uh, PWG Architects will go into those in detail later. So Daniel, if we could flip past that slide and then go to the next slide, please. Um, I'm gonna begin, though, uh, with, um, uh, questions directed to Rabbi Silverman concerning, uh, the place of religious assembly. Uh, Rabbi Silverman's going to discuss, uh, the religious purposes for which, uh, Habad of CMU exists, uh, how it, uh, relates to the university, uh, and how it would continue to do so if the application is approved. Uh, I want to point out, and I believe this letter was emailed to the board earlier this week, uh, that CMU is supportive of Habad of CMU and has no objections to the project being presented today. Uh, as I mentioned, I'm getting, next gonna ask Lisa Carver some questions about, uh, dimensional matters. Uh, and we're gonna conclude with Cindy Jample to discuss parking, uh, and an alternative parking plan, uh, for the project. Very briefly, I just want to make sure this point is clear in the board, for the board. Um, I've referred to Habad of CMU, but the full legal, legal name of the applicant is Habad of Carnegie Mellon University, Inc. Uh, the applicant is a separate Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation. It's separate and distinct from Carnegie Mellon University. Uh, it's one of at least 25, uh, different religious organizations and congregations that are affiliated with CMU through the university's Department of Student Affairs. Uh, Habad of CMU does not receive any direct financial support from the university. Uh, as stated in, uh, CMU's letter, uh, Habad of CMU will have to seek out its own funding for this project. Uh, just to be, so, this is just to be clear for everyone, this is not a CMU project. This is a project by a separate entity. So, uh, unless there are questions after that introductory remarks, I'm gonna ask.
I was gonna say, we're concerned about the zoning issues.
Yeah.
The funding or, or, so, let's move on.
We'll carry on. So Rabbi Silverman, would you join me here, please?
Good morning.
Good morning. Please, uh, for the court reporter, uh, can you hear us both at this point? I said, the reporter. Um, would you please, uh, for the court reporter, um, give your name, spell it, and give your address, please?
Yes, sir. Shlomo Silverman, Rabbi Shlomo Silverman. My first name is S H L O M O, and then Silverman, S I L V E R M A N.
Thank you. Um, I'm cautioned, as I said when we were preparing, take your time, slow down, as a court reporter.
You're at the last hearing of the day and where we don't care to spend the next seven hours doing this, we will hear all the evidence.
Uh, so I understand that Habad, uh, is a worldwide movement within the Jewish community. Um, could you tell us a little bit about, uh, the Habad movement generally? Uh, and then more specifically, how it relates to, um, Habad of CMU?
I was gonna say, if we could keep this testimony limited, we recognize that it's a.
Talking about a place of religious assembly.
I, I understand that, that we don't need to go into every detail about the organization.
Uh, that's important to tell a rabbi not to talk too much. I agree. So, I will say, Habad is a worldwide organization, serves in over 5,000 centers around the world and over 100 countries. Specifically, I'm gonna go to Habad on campus, which is Habad serving campus organizations. Really, it's in over 250 campuses in the US. It sort of expands, it's under the leadership of the Levabat Sherebi. And he said, we really have to be there for every single Jewish student, to be there as a home, a place of religious worship, family, uh, Shabbat meals, holiday dinners, services, and the like. So, my wife, Chani and I, who should be here shortly, we started 17 years ago, Habad of CMU. We've been doing it for uh, most of our lives as well, uh, doing different things with Habad. But we started 17 years ago, really expanding here for the students of Carnegie Mellon University. That is our main focus. And we are there for them 24/7. So, uh, whether it's going to the hospital in the middle of the night, whether it's uh, emergency counseling, uh, we're doing everything currently out of our home. And, uh, that gives you a general idea. Habad is here. It's our, it's our mission. This is not just our job for us. This is something that we're passionate about. Uh, I'm excited to be doing my work every single day. And I appreciate the interactions that I have with students and the university.
So, um, uh, it, again, just for purposes of establishing religious purposes for which we're here. Um, in the Jewish community, the Jewish faith tradition, um, worship involves more than just showing up at synagogue, correct?
Correct.
And to just very quickly explain, uh, why having facilities that allow for communal meals, uh, in addition to a synagogue, worship space are important in the Jewish faith.
Okay, so Judaism is, I would say, almost 10% synagogue, 90% is everything that goes along with it. So that's Shabbat dinners, holiday events, and everything that we do, that's part of our religious nature. So we have a Shabbat table, we'll make a kiddish, we'll make a, there's a ceremony that we do, even at the Shabbat dinners. Every holiday is celebrated with food and eating, and the cultural aspects is all part of our Jewish tradition.
Okay, so, um, in other words, um, if this project is approved, uh, there will be a, uh, places, and we'll go into the plans shortly, there will be places for these, uh, religious meals.
Correct.
Um, mostly on Friday evenings, I assume.
And, Mr. McKeegan, again, I don't want to dwell on this too much because the, um, religious assembly definition means, um, establishment operated by a religious organization for religious worship, religious training, and related religious services. And I think we're willing to accept that would be appropriate, but we have to focus on the zoning requirements and how you're actually proposing to use the structure that you're proposing to.
Thank you.
Bill. So, let's do that.
Pull up, uh, slide, exhibit eight, Daniel. So this is just a brief history, Shabbat, next exhibit, please.
Carol.
This is a little bit about Habad of Carnegie Mellon University. Next slide, please, Daniel. All right, and then, uh, these are photographs of the Habad events at 5120 at the rabbi's home. Next, please. So I want to ask you a little bit about this, uh, slide, Rabbi. Um, before, uh, Habad acquired the property, uh, can you kind of characterize some of the uses that, uh, would have gone on there?
Yeah, so from my house, which is 5120, all the way to the corner, which is popular in Forbes, that's all student rentals. So these are all the different unofficial party houses for the different fraternities. So the next door was actually Pike Fraternity, and there's a couple of different fraternities that are further down the line. So these are just some pictures of some of the, you can just see the garbage thrown and the, and the parties with hundreds of students that are going on currently at these residence. We bought this home and we currently have no tenants in the home, uh, working on this project.
Uh, and I believe, uh, the Carnegie Mellon University letter comments on some of these, uh, other uses. So now let's go to the building itself. So the first slide up here is, uh, a plan for the basement of the building. Uh, very quickly and briefly, uh, what is the proposed uses within this space of the building?
So this is a kosher kitchen, as well as the yellow area is the seating area for the Shabbat dinners, so.
And, and this would accommodate, um, how many people do you typically get?
We get an average of 60 to 70. I say average. Uh, so this is accommodating, I think, probably around what we're getting on an average.
Okay. Uh, if we could go.
And can I, can I just pause? Because I think this is probably relevant to the parking as well. Um, the, are the students who attend the dinners limited to CMU students? Um, the are the students who attend the dinners limited to CMU students, or could Pitt students attend? I mean, do you have a cutoff point? Do they have to register in advance? Do you know that you're only going to you're not going to have a hundred people if you're only anticipating seventy for food service purposes, if nothing else?
So so far, we managed to accommodate if more students show up. Uh, we are for Chabad for Carnegie Mellon. Obviously, there is another Chabad for the University of Pittsburgh. I can't say that students never bring a friend from different universities, but primarily it's CMU.
Okay, but is there a way of, again, managing so that you'd, I and again, I I appreciate bringing a friend and accommodating, and you know, you can make food last for how many ever people, but um, is there a way of controlling the occupancy so that you don't exceed the sixty to seventy that you estimate here?
Uh, well, currently, we're in our house, so it's very limited. So I think maybe on high holidays, you'll have the number creep up higher. And there's no way.
I'm just asking if they register before they.
For the, I say, for the high holidays, for Passover, for the big dates that we expect, we do ask for registration. For regular Shabbat dinners, where we don't usually have an issue, it's there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, so if we can go to the first floor plans, please. Next slide, Daniel. All right, so this is the first floor of the uh, building. Um, you'll note for the benefit of the board that there are two, Lisa's going to talk about this later, there are two stair towers shown uh, as well as an elevator. We could go to the next slide, please. This is the second floor of the building. Uh, what is the main purpose uh, of this floor, Rabbi?
So this is the green is the synagogue. Uh, so currently, we're having people stand around our dining room table to do services before dinner. So this is a synagogue, and then we have a conference room for like, uh, classes and small study groups.
And how many people will be accommodated in the synagogue?
So we have forty, I think forty eight seats we put in the synagogue. Uh, for our high holidays, we have around thirty five, forty.
Uh, and that that's typical attendance at synagogue services, correct?
For high holidays, that's typical. For our regular Shabbat services, it could be less.
Okay, uh, if we could go to the last uh, building plan slide, please. So this is the third floor of the building, uh, and what is proposed to go on here?
So this is also, I'm sorry, this is, we have two office, uh, study flex spaces, so students can come in if they need a quiet space. Uh, with a lot going on this past two years with antisemitism and the like, we've had to figure out how we can bring in counselors and then people to talk to the students. So this would be a place in the Chabad that we can do that as well. Uh, we currently do not have those resources. And then we have an area with couches and some gaming area for relaxation for the students.
Uh, do you currently provide counseling services to students? I mean, we're just counseling services.
So personally, we're here twenty four seven. So with myself and my wife, uh, we get calls all the time, and currently, we do have to either walk with them to campus or go on my back deck, hope it's not too cold, uh, because we don't have, I do have seven kids, and uh, there's a lot going on in my home.
So that sometimes gets in the way of the services.
Correct.
Okay, now, uh, and I believe the chair was going through this, but um, uh, let's just ask quickly, who typically worships at these services? Maybe make a distinction.
Wasn't even my question, Mr. McKeegan. My question was, on this slide, there's a um, WC slash shower area um, identified. It's the but the intent of this is no residential, um, would anybody be living in the home or the structure?
News to our recommendation of our board, we decide not to put any housing in the home at all.
Okay, so the shower is just, maybe somebody needs it after being in the game room. I don't know. But I I'm just saying, so, but the but there are no bedrooms or, and the only kitchen is the community kitchen in the basement.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, so let me go back to asking who worships here, uh, and maybe if you could make a distinction between undergraduate and graduate students.
So it's around ninety, ninety five percent undergraduates. We have between five and ten percent grad students, depending on the week. Uh, monthly, we do host like a a separate grad lunch, and then we'll have some more. But ninety five percent of the students are undergraduate students at Carnegie Mellon.
And you are oriented, again, uh, primarily, almost exclusively to Carnegie Mellon University students?
Correct.
I mean, just as with any church, somebody could come in, but you're not seeking them out.
Yeah, I mean, we're, yes, we're on the block, we're here, but it's Chabad of CMU for a reason.
Okay, now, um, how do, how do CMU students typically get to this location, to your, how would they get here?
Uh, the students typically walk, occasional biking, uh, we, do I want to bring up parking stuff like?
Let's, let me ask you this. Are there, uh, might there be religious reasons why students would not drive?
Yeah, so on the Sabbath, uh, as a, you're not supposed to drive, uh, besides for the fact that most students are within walking distance.
Okay, and have you actually um, surveyed, so to speak, your congregants to see who has cars, who might drive, who who is going to be walking?
Yeah, so I sent that a Google form, which I think will be displayed later, as well as I asked at a couple of Shabbat dinners with approximately sixty students in attendance, and I only had two students raise their hand that they own a car.
Uh, Cindy Jample is going to talk a little bit more about uh, parking facility. All right, now, um, uh, you described that you host, uh, currently host Chabad of CMU uh, services in your home. Um, have you ever received any complaints from your neighbors, uh, regarding those services, any complaints about parking or the like?
We have not.
Uh, my last question, um, it's really not so much a question, it's a comment. Uh, you've participated in many community meetings for this project. Um, the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition, I believe, has submitted a letter uh, in support of the project. I have copies. The board doesn't have it. I also have copies of uh, letters that were submitted last night that I can either submit to Daniel later.
Well, again, I I think I'm going to say this for anybody objecting as well, the, we we can accept the letters, but there's there's nobody testifying behind them. They're.
For whatever, for what weight they have, yes, thank you.
Limited weight, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have uh, no other questions for the Rabbi at this point, so unless the board does.
Okay.
Um, sorry, I'm on.
No questions, Madam.
All right, and Mr. Richardson, any questions? A hearing done.
No questions, sorry.
Thank you, that's all right. We don't want to be hearing from Mr. Richardson today. All right, next witness, can we?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, uh, would you please, again, state your name, um, and address for the court reporter, and a little bit about your professional background?
Uh, good morning. I am Lisa Carver, last name spelled C A R V as in Victor E R, um, with uh, PWWG Architects located at four oh eight Boulevard of the Allies, and that's one five two one nine.
And is it fair to characterize you as the uh, lead architect for this project?
That's correct, yes.
So we're going to review some uh, drawings for the project now. Daniel, if we could go to the next slide, please. Uh, these are just some of the letters, so keep flipping ahead, I'm sorry. All right, so, um, could you describe to the board what this um, uh, rendering is depicting?
Yes, uh, this is the, essentially, the front of the uh, proposed structure. Uh, on the left is fifty one twenty Beeler, um, Rabbi Silverman's residence, fifty one fourteen to the other side. The intent here was understanding the need to accommodate the program that was previously reviewed in um, a constrained site uh, for that amount of program. So we are proposing a three-story structure. Um, and we try to incorporate some elements that uh, broke down the scale, if you will, from a residential standpoint, including a front porch element, as well as um, some horizontal elements that break down the materials um, into a more pedestrian scale.
And Ms. Carver, we are, we are not the planning commission. She is, but I'm not. So, I mean, I, the architectural details are less important than the details of the variances that are being. Okay, thank you.
Tower on the uh, right-hand side of the structure. What is that for?
Yes, that's uh, an elevator tower. So uh, we wanted to provide and need to, per the building code, uh, full accessibility to the structure. So again, given the constraints of the site, uh, the front of the building is the most conducive to locate that tower. And again, we're adding um, windows to.
Okay, but for building code purposes, the building has to accommodate.
That's right, that's right.
All right.
Well, and and if I'm correct, the um, the structure as proposed would be sort of shifted right on the parcel so that it would be taking up what is currently the driveway to the rear, which would allow per parking in the rear.
That's correct.
So you're eliminating your access to the rear parking.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, it and I, because it's not listed on the um, agenda, I'm assuming that it would comply with the setback requirement in terms of the um, property line, even though you're taking up the driveway now. There's there's no variance requested for an interior side setback requirement.
Uh, from the basic dimensional requirements, yes, I think there could be the residential compatibility kind of overlays that some.
Well, I I mean, the resident, because the use is different because the residential compatibility applies, but from nine oh three oh three, you're not. Okay.
That's right.
Karen.
So, uh, we're not going to spend a lot of time on the next two slides, but if Lisa, Daniel wants to be pulled them up and just quickly explain uh, what these.
Sure, that, so this is the self-elevation. This is facing fifty one fourteen towards Forbes, um, mostly um, siding with uh, some brick at the uh, elevator tower. We're also trying to introduce some light into the basement.
Slide please, Daniel.
And then this is facing uh, the Silverman's residence, again, uh, adjacent to their driveway, so more visible from uh, Beeler Street, um, uh, keeping more brick along that facade.
Uh, so now we're going to go to some of these uh, dimensional requests. Daniel, if you go to the next slide, please. So let's focus for a moment on the um, on the rear of the property, which uh, in this uh, slide would be uh, the area to the right of the slide. Um, what is the uh, the mention uh, for the uh, proposed uh, rear uh, rear yard?
It's a little over twenty feet, about twenty and a half feet.
And that's the uh, the line, the black line that's kind of running down, uh, roughly a third of the way into the photograph?
That's right, yeah.
Uh, and what is the um, standard residential compatibility setback for a project of this type?
Uh, it's thirty feet.
Okay, definitely, it's the extended variance we're asking. Now, um, uh, let's take a moment to discuss, please, um, some features of the building that require it to be um, uh, larger, so to speak, than uh, otherwise. Uh, because of the um, because of the type of building it is, the type of use it's proposed, are there building code requirements that you need to satisfy?
Y- yes, because of the program and the building code, we are required to provide two separate means of egress, um, which we're accommodating through two stairs.
Uh, in addition, the accessibility requirements would mandate the elevator, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Uh, and within the building, how much uh, floor area do the um, uh, stairwells take up?
The stairwells and the elevator are approximately three hundred square feet per floor.
So the building could be that much smaller, had you not had to do that?
That's right, yes.
Um, now, uh, will the rear yard of this property be landscaped?
It will, as well as fenced.
What, just, um, I think you may have shown the rear, but from a topographical standpoint, is the parcel itself fairly flat? Does it slope up at the rear? I mean, what's what's back there?
It it is relatively flat, excuse me. Uh, it does slope up in the front a bit, and then it tapers.
Okay, but there's, it's not like there's a dramatic hill in the back, because the garage and the ax, the the currently, the parcel has a driveway to a flat rear.
But detached garage in the rear, that's right.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, on this uh, drawing, uh, you depicted a garage uh, on fifty one twenty Beeler Street. Uh, will this uh, proposed rear yard extend any further into the backyard of fifty one eighteen Beeler than the garage location?
Uh, no, it will not.
It's it's not shown on this drawing, but is there a similar garage uh, at fifty one fourteen Beeler Street?
There is.
And again, will the uh, rear uh, rear facade uh, project any further into the uh, yard than the garage location?
It will not, no.
And again, try to talk one at a time so that the court reporter doesn't have you talking over one another.
Um, not sure we got any answer to this question, um, but just to repeat, uh, the backyard will be landscaped?
That is correct, yes.
All right, and it will be fenced as well.
That's right.
All right, now, um, let's focus for a minute on the um, let's take a look at. Yeah, on this slide, if we could take a moment, uh, and uh, go to the upper uh, right-hand corner with the trash pad fence. How will um, uh, how will trash be picked up and removed from the property?
Yes, there will be a a private waste um, hauler that will come. Uh, given, again, the constraints of the site, we uh, will not have a dumpster, but we'll have individual containers that will need to be uh, taken out by way of the new uh, sidewalk that's adjacent to the uh, to the building.
And you're also showing some bike parking back there?
That's right, yes.
Uh, and uh, whose property is closest uh, to that trash location?
Uh, fifty one twenty, the Silverman's residence.
All right, so now let's move uh, to the front, if we could, please. Um, and again, if you could just explain uh, to the board, uh, the scope of the variance that we're asking for in terms of uh, relief from the residential compatibility standards.
Uh, for the front yard setback?
Yes.
Okay, so yes, the front yard setback is thirty feet. Um, we are requesting um, essentially to be in line with a contextual setback uh, of the adjacent structures.
And how far is that?
Uh, that is about twenty six feet, I think twenty six two.
So roughly a four-foot uh.
Correct.
Okay.
So you're, are, is your position that application of the residential um, compatibility standard would take you out of context with the other structures on the street?
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, um, let's uh, let's focus a little bit on the uh, side yards. Uh, if you could maybe just explain to the board what's happening with the side yards.
Sure, so um, the blue lines are the base um, uh, district setbacks of, and the orange uh, dash lines are the residential compatibility uh, setbacks. Um, again, contextually, the houses on either side, um, and the existing building on the site are general, about two and two and a half to three feet from the property line with bay windows that uh, project into that are approximately eighteen inches uh, from the property line. So we are uh, requesting to be at that three-foot mark on both sides.
Consistent with what's there now.
That's correct, correct.
All right, so now, lastly, uh, Lisa, I want to talk a little bit about the uh, shared uh, ADA parking that's shown in the um, uh, lower left-hand corner of the property. Um, what is that area used for currently?
There is currently a driveway that runs past the building, um, the existing building to a detached garage, as I mentioned previously. Um, so it is currently paved.
Okay, it's paved, it's available for parking right now?
That's right.
Okay, uh, so all we're really doing is shortening the driveway and using that as.
Well, you're also cutting off access to the rear, which is how um, acts, I mean, that it, front yard parking is prohibited. So you're creating a condition, I mean, it it's a self-created hardship in the sense that you're eliminating the access to the rear where parking is supposed to go. I mean, well, I I'm just saying that that it, front yard parking isn't permitted, and we have to take that into consideration.
All right, um, I don't believe I have any other questions for Lisa. Does the board have any questions?
I don't have any other questions, Julie.
No questions, Madam.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Real questions.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Uh, last witness we have directly is Cindy Jample. Cindy, uh, not going to ask you about your professional qualifications, but.
You have to spell first.
Spell your name.
Okay, Cynthia Jample, that's J A, M is in Mary P's, and Peter O L E.
And Cindy, of course, is a traffic engineer. She's testified here before. Um, so let me start with asking uh, this question. Cindy, are you familiar uh, with Beeler Street and Carnegie Mellon University parking matters generally?
Yes.
How so?
I have done numerous studies for Carnegie Mellon University and in the Squirrel Hill area, and also uh, was a longtime resident of Squirrel Hill as well.
Okay, uh, if we could go to the next slide, Daniel. So, um, Cindy, what does this um, uh, slide show? What are we, what are we depicting for the board here?
Um, what, we intend to use off-site parking to meet the requirements for the building. So this indicates the uh, legal walking path from the building to the Carnegie Mellon East Garage, uh, a distance of two hundred seventy five feet.
Okay, um, and Carnegie Mellon University operates that garage, uh, that's depicted in yellow, kind of in the.
And pardon me for being confused here. The original agenda request was for off-site parking. Um.
We are.
I under, but you're, you had indicated that an alternative plan is being proposed?
We are, we are proposing.
Okay, thank you.
Which which incorporates the garage, that's why, that's why we.
Okay. But it's not straightforward.
Correct.
Nine fourteen oh seven G.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, so, um, turning to the garage, um, Cindy, have you uh, discussed with CMU, do you have information regarding the availability of parking spaces in that garage?
I have had some uh, uh, correspondence back and forth with them. Their garage is just under eight hundred spaces, and throughout the month of September, they've had availability continuously. So their feeling is that they do have available spaces there.
And how uh, how is that availability handled? How can people park in that garage? And how how is that availability handled? How can people park in that garage?
They well, some people have leases because they're affiliated with the university, but it's also possible to be member of the public and pull a ticket to park there.
Okay. And does the does the Carnegie Mellon University's letter, I think, comments a little bit about parking at the garage as well?
Just to say that there's availability. Yes.
You incorporated that into a report, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
This may be jumping around a little bit, but did you indicate any type of study that determined how many parking spaces should be required for religious assembly use of this nature?
I will answer that. We have talked to the planning department. The parking for religious assembly is based on the number of seats in the area of worship.
Correct.
Calculation based on forty eight seats in the synagogue. We came up with seven, rounding up seven parking spaces, one of which we're proposing to accommodate on site. The remaining six, we feel there is adequate space at all times.
And that and that's where I was trying to figure out the order of magnitude of how many would be required and how many. So the proposal would be to have one spot on site in the front yard parking space, which isn't permitted, and then six in the garage, which would be dedicated or okay, carry on.
They're always available, is I think the position we're taking. All right. Now, do you anticipate based on?
Well, I mean, I guess, as opposed to an alternative request, are you asking for a variance to zero out any kind of parking requirement?
Frankly, you can you can look at it either way.
Okay. I mean, I guess, are you proposing to impose on yourself conditions with respect to parking? Like, we have contracted with CMU to always have six spaces available or?
I'll be candid, Carnegie Mellon University will not enter into bulk leases with third parts.
Okay.
They will have it. They've assured us, though, that the garage is always open, and they've given us indications that there are always spaces in the garage.
Would there be any means for the organization to encourage people who might be making use of parking to park there? Like, we'll validate your parking or something like that. I mean, like, I understand that it's anticipated that people would primarily be walking, but in the event, how would you encourage use of that?
If not, the board would like to encourage us or propose a condition of that type, we wouldn't object to it.
I'm just asking, what kinds of conditions would you be willing to impose on yourself? Okay.
Keep in mind, just in terms of this discussion, the reality is that what a code would require seven seven spaces.
Okay.
We only have at most two or three people who are driving here, and that's very occasional as well. So given Rabbi Silverman's testimony, Cindy, do you anticipate any negative impacts on parking along Beeler Street through this project?
The parking is already occurring for the activities that are proposed to be relocated into fifty one eighteen Beeler Street, and I don't anticipate any changes from what's happening today.
And most of the Habad activities, as Rabbi Silverman testified, would be occurring in the evenings or over the weekends?
Yes.
And that even frees up more space in the garage, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, did you prepare a report analyzing the parking for this project?
Yes.
And has that report been submitted to the board?
I guess it's being submitted today.
Well.
Well, has it has it has it been submitted and reviewed by the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure?
No.
All right. Is that something that, again, from a board perspective, the input of DOMI is important to us, and we need to understand how you know, what what other considerations they might have?
This project isn't calling for any traffic or or street improvements. So I don't believe DOMI has been involved yet, but if the board would like us.
Well, again, there's that front yard parking space, and I understand you're proposing to make use of what had been a driveway, but you're transforming it into a front yard parking space. So that could be a DOMI issue. I'm just trying to understand who's reviewed it because so that we don't overlap reviewing, but.
So I don't have any other questions for Cindy, once the board does.
Okay. Mr. Richardson, anything for Ms. Jample?
No questions. Thanks.
No questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
No other witnesses? I think there are some people who wish.
I I would say that there are definitely, you didn't take up the whole room. So all right. So as.
If I may, just to be polite about things going forward, I understand this is a public proceeding, and people have a right to speak. I do want to reserve a right to question people on standing if they assert a right to stay as a party.
We are going to hear from everybody. You can ask questions. I will make sure we get addresses, but I am not going. We're going to hear everybody.
Yeah, I'm not. I'm not suggesting you don't hear anything. I'm just reserving of objection.
All right. But we are going to start with. So for people online and people in the room, what Mr. McKeegan is referring to is that if you live somewhere that would not be affected by what is being proposed here, the question would be whether you have standing to comment, because it wouldn't impact your property. So one of the things that we want to understand is where you live and what kind of impact you anticipate or concerned about. So if everyone could start, everybody who wants to comment or testify, if you could start with where you live and how you think you how you think your property might be affected, that would be helpful. But we are going to start with anybody in the room who would like to comment. I I know that. I'd like to start with anybody in the room who would like to comment with respect to this application, sir. I mean, if it is everybody in the back here to comment. All right. Like I said, we want to make sure we hear from everybody. So you raised your hand first. Come on up.
Important slide for my presentation.
We don't know who you are. So we're going to start with that. Could you give us your name?
My name is Jeff McCullough.
And where do you live, Mr.?
I live at five one one seven Beeler Street, which is directly opposite.
We're going to get to your testimony eventually, but do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Again, don't talk over me. Wait until I finish.
You got it.
Thank you. Daniel, did you have a slide?
How do you spell your last name?
M I K U L A.
M I K U L A?
Yes.
Okay, I do not see. I did not receive an email from you, as far as I'm aware.
Okay, so it's like zoningboard dot zoningboard at whatever. No, that's okay. If you don't have it. I have. I have it on my laptop. If you have a connection here.
I tell you what, why don't you explain what your concern is and will? Can you use any of their exhibits to explain what your concern is, and then we can accept your exhibit later?
Absolutely.
Okay.
If one thing that might be helpful is if somebody could pull up a street view of Google Maps.
This is again. These are we want to have real exhibits. So can you make use of any of the exhibits that?
Yes.
Okay. That's.
Yes.
There we go.
Actually, could you actually go one further? There was the three D rendering. Nope, one beyond that. And then the next one. Yeah, nope, one more. Actually, I'll use that one. Okay. Yeah. Again, Jeff McCullough, directly across the street. Oh, am I ready to proceed? Excellent. But first, I'd like to say that Rabbi Shlomo and Connie have been excellent neighbors. Glad to have them in the neighborhood. Glad to have the Habad. I support the fact that I support people's right to be Jewish, and they need a place to be Jewish, and I'm okay with that being across the street from me. We've been great neighbors, and I welcome you as neighbors and the Habad. I am not Jewish, but I support that. But if you take a look, my my first concern is, if you take a look at when I moved in five years ago, if you if you take a look at all of the houses on the street, the roof lines were all about the same. And that is the same as the roof line on the house on the right. If you go three houses that way, and just about every house that way, they're all the roof lines are the same. Whenever the Silvermans added on the top story, it then created a new line of roofs that stuck out from the rest of it. The new proposed structure is going to add yet another story on top of that. My concern is for the overall direction of the neighborhood. Not only does it create a new a new standard?
Say, can I?
Yes.
I'm going to stop you a little bit here because the zoning code does allow for three story structures that don't exceed forty feet in height. And just because there may be other structures on the street that don't meet that height limitation, under the code, a structure in an R one district can be three feet up to three stories up to forty feet.
Got it. Okay.
I mean, that's, okay, I mean, that it.
Valid.
I understand what your concern is, that your your position is looking across the street. This would be.
Strictly from a zoning standpoint.
But from a zoning standpoint, they are not requesting a variance from the height requirement. And there are two height requirements. There's one that relates to stories, and there's one that relates to feet. And my understanding is they've not requested a variance from either one of those requirements.
Right. Well, that I would I would add that even the width doesn't match the width of the rest of the houses. And I believe that is part of the variance.
Well, the again, that's why I asked about whether they met the base zoning requirements. There's some additional requirements that apply because of the the nature of the use and what they're proposing. But in terms of, if this were a house, it would comply with the setback requirements with a couple little variations.
Right.
I mean, the that's they meet the setbacks on both sides. That's why I asked that question.
Right. And this might be more of a planning, but you could tell me, I would also argue that I would struggle that if anybody looked at that building, would mistake that for a house. So I don't think that it fits in with the rest of the the neighborhood. And again, the concern is the overall. Because then what happens is the rest of the neighbors all all then want to put in third stories, and then we create gradual slide.
And again.
I get it. Yep.
Code does allow.
Point taken.
Third story. So.
Point taken.
Kind of constrained on that. But but I appreciate your concern, and I and we will certainly make sure that the exhibit and slide that you prepared is part of the record and part of what we consider.
Well, thank you. And the final concern is with the parking. Parking is always tight because the parking, the publicly accessible parking, on street parking, doesn't start until after my property and the and the proposed proposed building. And I think it's great that they're reserving spaces in the garage, but the reality of students and the reality of humans is, if there is a space on the street and there's a space eighth of a mile away, they're probably not going to park in the garage, is just to your the point you were making earlier.
And as a matter of record, the board does not support parking chairs in any neighborhood.
Exactly. No parking chairs.
Just.
And then the other thing, the other thing I would ask is, Rabbi, how many how many students did you have at the Habad five years ago?
Love it?
I was gonna say, it and I'm just going to say, we'll allow you some questioning back and forth, but not much.
Yeah.
And to the extent that you need to answer, you need to be on the microphone and identify yourself again for the record so that the court reporter knows who's responding.
Oh, how about this? Let's see if we could both agree on this.
Again, if you're asking a question to which an answer is required, you'll need to stand up. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi.
Okay. Rabbi Shlomo Silverman, S H L O M O, Silverman, S I L V E R M E N.
Um, yeah, I guess just briefly talk to the the growth that you've had.
So the growth that we've had is obviously we've been pretty steady until you asked specifically about five years ago. So that would would probably COVID, a very small post COVID, we've had a pretty consistent growth. I would say since October seventh, we've been around that sixty to seventy average that we mentioned earlier.
Yeah, my my experience, though, is that they have they have had significant growth over the last few years. About three years ago, how many post COVID, how many students did you have?
Around the fifty range, yeah.
Fifty? Okay. That's different than earlier conversations we had. But I'm, again, I support the Habad, and I'm glad that they're having the success that they had. My experience is that they've had significant growth, and if that growth is to continue, the demands on space and building and parking will just increase.
And again, that's why I asked if there's a means of limiting, because.
Absolutely.
I I understand the I appreciate your concern. But did you have any other questions or comments you wanted to make? Okay. Next person in the back.
Thank you, Rabbi.
To comment or testify.
And again, I would like to enter into the record that I am in support.
Yeah.
Of the Habad.
We appreciate that. We understand that you have questions, too. Come on up. Good morning. Give us your name, please.
My name is Sandy Drosnes.
Make sure you're talking into the mic. There you go.
Can you hear me better now?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Sandy Drosnes, D is in David, R O S N E S.
And do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board this morning will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much.
I feel like I'm getting married again. Sorry.
No, but thank you.
I do not live directly across the street from Rabbi Silverman and Mrs. Silverman. However, I'm in the neighborhood, a little further up.
On on Beeler Street?
No, I do not lives. I do not live on Beeler. I live.
Give us your address.
Yes, I'm going to. I live at eleven oh one Gatewood Drive, G A T E W O O D, one word.
And can you explain what your concerns about the project are?
Yes, but before I do that, I would like to just mention, as you told me I could do, the names of people who have submitted letters who were probably not going to be able to speak. Some of them had family emergencies, others are not well, and couldn't attend in person. And some of them, they're they have work conflicts. So the the names of the people who have submitted letters to Mr. Shepki are Paul Glabicki, and I think his address is fifty two one fifty two eleven Beeler Street, Gerard Campbell, he submitted a letter late last night, fifty two thirteen Beeler, Barbara Griffith.
We have. Some of these people are appearing online and.
I don't know that they will be. So.
I can see that they're here. So.
Is Barbara here? Because she.
Barbara's Barbara's name was on the list.
Yeah, but I think she's in a meeting now. Margaret Olinsky, she has had a family emergency, fifty four forty three Fair Oaks, and her husband, John Ayers, they submitted a letter. Gilda Oppone, fifty two twenty eight Beeler, Bob Fagan on Wilkins, Cindy Berger, and Christine Graziano on Robin Wood, Robin Road.
A number, a number of those individuals are on our list of attendees.
All right, good.
Thank you.
So I have a whole letter that I prepared, which I also submitted. But my main concern, and others will say many of the other concerns, my main concern is the safety of this structure. Currently, we do have a on your on your door Habad, but it's not that visible. My concern with the situations that we are faced with today, with the anti Semitic situations that are going on, not only here in Pittsburgh, but around the world. This is bringing more light to this. So if I just may read, and I wanted to thank you, by the way, for taking my statement. We asked at one of the meetings, how would we make this structure safer than what currently exists? And the answer, as I recall, were cameras. Well, to me, that's insufficient coverage for any kind of major. Well, to me, that's insufficient coverage for any kind of major uh, religious organization, especially our Jewish religion. And so my question is, beyond cameras, what is the proposed scenario for safety? Now, we also know, and it's on public record, that you had an incident a couple of years ago and you were in Israel at the time. And Connie was home with the children. This happened sometime in the night, maybe between 12 and 3:00 in the morning. I don't know exactly the time. Um, there was an incident with a drive-by shooting.
Okay. And, and, and I appreciate what your concerns are, what, what the, the board is here about the zoning issues.
Right. But there's all, that's also should be taken into in, in consideration is the safety factor of this structure, realizing that that's maybe.
And again, this is the zoning board, so we have to look at the dimensions of the structure. Are you concerned about the parking, the height?
All of this. You want me to go through just a brief highlight?
Yep.
Um, requested variances in terms of the size and height. We were told at one meeting that the height did exceed uh, the 40 feet. Now, that's been changed apparently.
There, there's not a request for a variance from the.
Okay, that obviously was changed. Compatibility with the existing architecture that exists on, from Beeler Street at Forbes all the way up to Wilkins. This does not, it's not compatible whatsoever. Disruption, disruption of the existing residential neighborhood. This looks more like a commercial structure than it does a home. Um, many of the other Habad uh, locations do not reflect in a residential community, do not reflect a commercial front. They still have the existing residential house that existed and then did their changes, interior changes and some exterior changes in the rear. Well, Rabbi, I beg to differ because on, on Ellsworth Avenue, there's one that it kept the existing front, the, the existing front facade.
And it, no.
All right. Okay. All right. Um, let's see. We're setting a precedent, if this goes through, for allowing other developers to come in.
No, we're not.
This could create a precedent.
There is no such thing as precedent in zoning law. Every property is unique and the uses that are being proposed are for this parcel and that's what we're considering.
Okay. Um, the collection of community services, disposal of the trash properly. Um, there's been no real explanation. Petite, police patrols taking away from other communities. The parking, which is yet to be explained, lighting and noise factors. And when we had the meeting at CMU, um, your team suggested nine parking spaces. Uh, CMU definitely did say that they would not uh, give you exception. I mean, it's on a case-by-case basis. Now that, at this hearing, we're, it's now reduced to six or seven spaces. So what, I'm curious to know what happened to the original nine. Um, and then the actual proposal of this use, is this really a religious structure when there's a small percentage of the structure itself going to um, a chapel? And um, the need for gaming rooms, et cetera, et cetera. I understand that's the, the age in which we live. Young people need to have other uh, opportunities. But I came from a family that if you went to the synagogue, that's what you did. You prayed. And um, I'm questioning the viability of maybe perhaps 12 and a half percent of the structure going to a religious situation. So um, I commend you. I always have. You've invited me to your home many times for Shabbat dinner. I declined, but, and I'm not opposed to having you continue your good work. But I am opposed to this structure. I'm sorry. I think it's out of place for this neighborhood.
Um, we're going to accept your letter as part of the record.
Thank you.
And like I said, a number of the people that you mentioned who submitted letters are actually available online. So we're gonna, we're gonna, thank you for your testimony. Um, there may be cumulative responses.
Yes.
Um, following.
Is there any?
Somebody else's comments. We have, we have other people who would like to.
Thank you very much.
Come on up. And we have a list of people who are online as well. So it's not just the people in the room. Thank you.
Good morning.
Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
My name is Anne Curtis. I live at 29 Unger Lane, which is about an eighth of a mile away from the proposed structure.
What is the name of the street?
Unger, like in Felix, Felix Unger.
Gotcha.
Unger without the H.
Do, do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I so affirm.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Carry on.
All right. I am a little hard of hearing. I wear hearing aids. So if I ask you to repeat, I do apologize.
I do too. So carry on.
Uh, all right. First of all, from previous testimony, it appears that my testimony could be limited only to the things where I have standing, where, how is my property going to be affected?
Just tell us what your comments are and we can sort out how they relate. But I want to understand what everybody's concerns are.
Okay, I will start with parking.
I don't want you to self-limit, but, okay. Carry on.
All right. I will start with parking. There have been several inconsistencies in what I've heard today about the availability of parking or the need for parking, parking access. As Sandy pointed out, it was first mentioned, there were nine parking spaces required under zoning requirements. Somehow it got reduced to six or seven, including the handicap space in front. I questioned that because the number of parking spaces are, as I understand it, based on the number of seats in the synagogue space. Rabbi testified that the entirety of the building is part of the Jewish tradition, and I understand that. But if in fact, the entire building is part of the tradition, shouldn't the parking estimate be based on the entire building? 110 seats in the basement, number of seats in the study area, uh, 70 seats in the synagogue, however many people are going to be up in the game room?
Yeah, and I, I guess, I mean, I, I appreciate what the concern is, but the zoning code, I mean, every, other religious uses have a community room and your presumption is that they're full all the time as opposed to having a service and then going for a meal. It's like, we have to take the averages, which is what the code is, which is why it's based on seats. So there are other uses within the building, they're not all occupied.
Okay, I, I understand that and I, I can work with that. Let's work with 100 seats that are in the basement for shop at dinner. That's going to be every Friday night. Um, perhaps, we're all not aware that Carnegie Mellon has a football team. Central Catholic plays their football games on Friday nights at CMU. I very much doubt that there is going to be parking available in the CMU garage on those Friday nights when 70 to 100 people will be having, having shop at dinner in the basement of 5118.
So you're, just, if I can summarize, your concern is that we should be considering what the actual parking requirement would be in the context of.
Yes, please.
And the, the potential effects of not requiring parking onsite.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Um, but the last thing about parking, as I said, I live on Unger Lane, which is a little dead-end street, an eighth of a mile from the proposed structure. On Friday night football, carnival, the entire weekend of carnival, move in, move out from CMU, there is not a parking place to be found on Beeler Street, on Unger Lane, on all of the surrounding near neighborhood streets. Because, and, and again, I, I recognize you said the average, but these events are so frequent that I think they should skew a little, skew the average. There are people all the time on Beeler Street. The fire hydrant outside my house has been blocked by people coming for carnival. And that's what, a week, a week and a half, plus construction and deconstruction in the spring. Uh, I do not believe that the request for a parking variance, especially a parking variance that's so small, is legitimate. I think the parking requirement is going to be much greater. Again, standing.
Um, and again, I, I, we, we appreciate, and I'm going to say this for everybody, we appreciate their, our concerns about parking and thank you for articulating them. Do you have other concerns that we should be considering?
Garbage removal.
Okay.
Um, the garbage proposal that I heard today is, is quite frankly, different from the proposal that I heard at Rabbi's house. Um, quite different from what I heard at the Zoom meeting. Uh, there are going to be trash cans as opposed to dumpsters in the back because you can't get a dumpster in and out. There's going to be a private waste hauler. And again, parking, is, is the waste hauler going to be double parked on Beeler while he's loading all these trash cans? Uh, how frequent is the trash pickup going to be? Uh, there's that. Uh, the last thing, again, as I said, as Sandy also mentioned, the vast majority of the building is not being used for religious services, although it's part of the Jewish tradition. The religious services part could be satisfied by a much smaller building. Uh, I, a game room? Uh, okay, that's all I have.
Okay. All right. I was going to say, I, again, because there are other people who want to express concerns, we appreciate you being here. We appreciate you coming in person and thank you very much. Did you have a letter or something that you wanted to submit?
Uh, yes, I do. But I, let me sign it.
Well, I was going to say, we could, we'll, we'll make that part of the record as well.
Thank you.
Um, is there anybody else in the room who would like to testify? Okay, so we're going to turn, if, if you're online and would like to testify, um, could you please raise your hand and we'll take everybody in order? Um, we have, I'm going to just start by the order that we have. Um, Lori Albert. Ms. Albert, can you identify yourself, please?
Hi, this is not Lori Albert. This is Barbara Griffin. I think I'm logged in on my office. Um, uh, on my office account, rather. I'm going to log out.
That's okay. That's all right. No, if you're here, testify. Can you give your name for the court reporter, please?
Yes, my name is Barbara Griffin and I uh, live at 5221 Beeler Street.
52?
21.
Okay. And um, do you have comments other than about uh, parking, garbage? I mean, do you, to the extent that you have new comments, let us know about those and if you support or um, disagree with the comments that have been made previously.
Yes, you'll be happy to know that I will be very brief. And I do agree, especially with the concerns about parking and about the primary use of the building as a religious assembly. Um, the applicant at one point said, I don't know if it was in a news article or um, in minutes of a meeting, that um, the goal of the house was to feel like a home, complete with fireplaces and bookshelves. Um, I, I think that's a fabulous idea. I definitely agree with the idea of um, having a comfortable place for Jewish students to gather. That's why I think that this building is primarily a student recreation center and not a place of religious worship. Um, you know, meals and, and game rooms and all of that thing are, are fabulous. Then it should be zoned as a community, um, a Jewish community center, um, rather than a, a place of religious worship. Um, and then parking, just, you'll, you'll note, just to add from, you might be able to see this in one of the aerial photos, but where that uh, proposed structure is, 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 when you come around the corner from Beeler Street, you can see in those yellow lines there in the middle, there is no parking at all on the street in front of the, the property. So anybody who wants to park, to go to the Habad, will have to park in front of some other neighbor's house. Parking is already very limited. I won't go again and again about how, what happens when there's a football game or carnival. I'm halfway up the street, can't even see it on this map. My driveway is frequently blocked. There's no parking. So um, and, and in the garage, I, I, I joined late, so I don't know what the agreement is in terms of parking in the garage. But I do know from Carnegie Mellon staff and students that I know that there's a waiting list for permitted parking in the garage. Um, it's very expensive to park if you don't have a permit. Um, so I, I, I don't believe that the parking issue um, has been solved. And then finally, I will just say, to the extent that you are relying upon the letter from the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition as our neighborhood representative, I do not feel that the, um, that their letter adequately represent the concerns of the neighbors. Um, the first dam was very poorly attended, I think because of lack of community outreach. The second dam had many more uh, attendees who all expressed concerns about the, about the development.
And I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt with the acronym, acronym that people refer them to as the DAM DAM meetings, but they are the Development Activities Meeting for the Registered Community Organizations. But I, I, I appreciate your reference to the DAM meetings. That's what you mean.
Yes, not D-A-M-N, the DAM meeting.
We, we got it. We understand.
And then to the extent that they lauded the applicant and, and the developers for additional, the unusual steps of additional meetings, those, those additional meetings were, were of the applicant and Shook's own making. It was because community outreach was not adequately done. And I would ask the, um, the board to um, hold off on making a, a decision until, um, you know, strongly consider the community input that has uh, been made today and um, gather more information. Because again, I don't think that letter from Shook adequately represents the concerns of the, of the, um, of the neighborhood. And with that, I am not Lori Albert. I am Barbara Griffin and I will end. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Griffin. We appreciate your testimony and we are gathering testimony here today. Um, DAMs, the Development Activities Meetings are helpful, but they are not determinative. Um, Ms. Griffin, I'm assuming that you swore in. So for the purposes of the record, we're assuming you swore in. Uh, the next person with a hand raised is Lori Fitzgerald, who's identified as being from the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition. So that's a good segue. Um, Ms. Fitzgerald?
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, and do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, so I'm Lori Fitzgerald. I am uh, on the board of the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition and the chair of the resident, or the Built Environment Committee. So I'm the author of the letter that was just referenced. You have the letter. I'm not going to restate the letter. I'm just um, here to state that I'm present and have been listening um, and to affirm the, the contents of our letter. A couple of things I wanted to mention, though. Ms. Midiger, you, you've mentioned about the, the front yard parking condition being kind of a, a condition caused by the development. Um, I appreciate that, that observation. That was not a way that we had thought about that. And so I can see that point. In the letter, we did state that we would prefer, the urban, we being the urban coalition, would prefer to see on-street parking for a dedicated ADA space. However, given the constraints that have been discussed here, which is that the parking uh, is not allowed in front of the, that, the property, um, that it's, it's an unusual circumstance. So I, I, I just, I wanted to, to the point that you made. I also wanted to point out that the Beeler Street area is in the permit, residential permit K zone. And so um, I, I know that there are parameters after hours and certain times of day when that's allowed, but that, that does further constrain. Um, if, if the students did not have a residential permit because they don't live on the street, they would not be legally allowed to park there.
And that's the question of legally allowed and would they do it is, is one of the things that we struggle with. So we appreciate that.
And that's, and that's a topic that, um, and I guess I more broadly want to address that, uh, as I mentioned in the letter, a lot of the concerns, I, I fully agree with what, what Ms. Griffin said. There were a lot of concerns heard by the community. We at the Urban Coalition have tried to distinguish. We at the Urban Coalition have tried to distinguish the concerns that are germane to the zoning issues and are committed to working through with the community on the issues that are broader and maybe not particular to this property. Parking is absolutely one. Council Strassburger's office has agreed to work with us for enforcement and for other strategies on that. It's a constant problem throughout the neighborhood. I don't know that there's any good solution or any one problem or cause for those problems. I think one of the things that the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition Board took into account when we were considering our support for this was that this use is already here. So there's already a track rate, this is not creating necessarily a new use that's further demanding parking, it already exists, it's just moving next door. So that was really germane to our support of that. And then I just wanted to mention, too, as far as some of the comments about aesthetics, we always struggle with Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition with not trying to be the aesthetic police on certain issues. So again, we really try to constrain our comments to the particular zoning issues. And the concerns from the neighbors are, you know, not something we take lightly by any means, but we're trying to look through it with the same lens that I know the zoning board is.
Okay, and thank you, Ms. Fitzgerald, for attending and presenting your letter. Ms. Fitzgerald was the last person with a hand raised, but some of the other people, okay, there we go, I knew we'd get another one.
Hello.
And Mr. Fagan, do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And can you explain what your position is with respect to this application?
Sure, let me tell you where I live first, if you don't mind. I live at 5487 Wilkins Avenue. My wife and I have lived there since 1997. While we are just around the corner on Wilkins, we have always found that issues affecting Beeler very, very quickly affect Wilkins. What I would like to know, first of all, having submitted my comments late at night last night, I wanted to find out from Mr. Shepke if, in fact, those have been included. If they have been included, then my remarks will be super short.
Well, I tell you what, why don't you, we'll accept, if you've submitted a letter since you're appearing, we'd be happy to have you summarize what your specific concerns are.
Thank you very, thank you very much. As others have said, my support of Habad is unquestionable. I am Jewish, and I believe that the Rabbi, in fact, walks the talk with Habad's overall mission. Yeah, here is my concern, having said that. While I absolutely agree with your statement that there is no such thing as precedent in zoning law or in the code, is it possible, you know, having my career of teaching strategic planning for the federal courts for 34 years, goodness, is it possible, though, that there may be a future where others might purchase multiple properties along Beeler, Wilkins, and the surrounding area with the intent?
This speaks to why we don't have precedent in zoning, and we have to treat each parcel as it is.
That's correct.
And each application as it is, so we can't speculate on who or who might not buy parcels on Beeler or Wilkins. So, I mean, I appreciate, if you have concerns about this use expanding, we're looking at the use as it is presented today.
Yes, well, sorry for interrupting.
Yep, but, I mean, are there other concerns that you have? And I appreciate, Wilkins could be affected by what goes on on Beeler, but are there specific concerns that you have that have not been shared with the board already today?
Sure, I would have to disagree with you respectfully, that, in fact, you do need to consider in making decisions regarding zoning, looking into what a possible future might be. And I understand that you take everyone case by case. My concern, however, is the change, very much of the changing nature of our neighborhoods, and that it is possible that perhaps not one building, but two buildings might be torn down in the future. How does the zoning board deal with this, whether it's a religious group or a nonreligious group? How are we prepared to do, to deal with that?
We review each application as it's presented to the board under the provisions of the code.
Yes, I understand that. Thank you very, thank you very much, I'm done speaking.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for participating, we appreciate that. And we, if you've submitted a letter, we'll take note of that as well. We have another, number of other people who are online. If anybody else would like to comment, we would be happy to hear you. If not, we're going to hear briefly from the applicant in response, and I mean briefly. Okay, we have one more. Mr. Glubicki, Paul Glubicki? Is this Paul Glubicki?
Yes, speaking.
All right, do you swear or affirm that the information that you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you identify your address and your concerns with respect to this application?
Yes, my address is 5207 Beeler Street.
Okay.
And my concern, listening to the testimony this morning, is that so much focus is placed on parking, but I think one of my concerns is the number of people who will be drawn to events at this new property proposal. There's a lot of traffic of students who live beyond the campus. It's not just simply a matter of crossing the streets to go to events from Forbes Avenue. But student traffic on the street can be really noisy and a cause for concern through different hours of the day. And I think what was mentioned earlier about limits to the occupancy or the attendees at these events is a major concern. If there's an outpouring of people coming to the address for a dinner or a special event, will they be lining up outside to get into the building? Will they be directed to, that the occupancy is filled and no one can enter? Will people be placed in the back of the building or in the front of the building? There was a photograph that was shown early in the presentation that showed large groups of people in the front of the building and in the back of the building gathering around this.
And I think that was intended as an exhibit of this, is what this would not be, that this is what would be, this would be replacing that type of party house use. But I appreciate your concern, and I did raise the question of how you consider the occupancy issue. So were there other questions or concerns that you wanted us to take into account?
No, everything else has been addressed, but that was my main concern, and I think that idea of the limitation, how many people are permitted, and when entry to the event stops, is really important.
Okay, and thank you very much for your testimony and for participating this morning. We have another hand raised from Bobby Conifal Share. Apologize for any mispronunciations.
It's actually David Conifal Share, somehow or another, on my wife's account.
Well, we'll let you introduce yourself for the record, but do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My wife and I live on Beeler.
Again, you'll have to give your full name and spelling for the court reporter.
Okay, my name is David Conifal Share, that's K-O-N as in November, E-F as in Foxtrot, A-L dash S as in Sierra, H-A-E-R. That'll take more time than I really want to talk, but 5300 Beelermont Place, which is one of the side streets off of Beeler Street. And I just want to kind of amplify, I've sent an email in, and you should have that in your file, I just want to amplify what I wrote. We fully support this project. I'm sure other speakers have talked about the number of students on the street, on Beeler Street. It is vastly a student-occupied absentee landlord situation, and any change in the makeup of the street, I think is going to be for the positives such as this. Substituting an unsupervised student inhabited property with a supervised property is a positive for the street. The days when the Beeler Street Valley is going to be owner-occupied, those are done, and we need to move forward to a different vision of what the street could be like. So I fully support this. The Silvermans were tenants of ours a number of years ago. They kept our property very well-maintained and quiet, and everything I've seen from their property on Beeler Street where they currently live is the same. So we fully support it. Thank you for your time.
And thank you for participating as well. I'm going to give one last shout to anybody online who'd like to participate, but then I would prefer to move to any brief response from the applicant to any of the, any and all of the issues that were raised. Mr. McKeegan, do you have any specific information that you would like to provide to the board?
I don't really have any specific information. I think most of the comments, they speak for themselves. I would only ask the board that when they consider religious use, that we respect that this country's traditions regarding how religions are treated, and they're all treated equally, and that's really it. Thank you.
The zoning code treats, religious uses, we, again, we have to take into account some of the testimony that was presented. There is no distinction, that's why it's identified as religious use and not a particular type of religious use. I do, because there has been some question about potential conditions and the number of people who would be onsite and the number of parking spaces, I would ask the applicant to provide the board with, they don't have to be lengthy proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law, but I would like to have an understanding of conditions that the board should consider. Just because you propose them does not mean that we would accept them.
I understand that, yep.
But I think this is, if we're to approve this use, there has to be some conditions involved. So I'd like to have some understanding of what you think would be appropriate.
And I was prepared to submit proposed findings and conclusions, so that's not a problem. The only request I would make of the board, I'm out of town all of next week, so if I could have three weeks to do it, it would be appreciated.
Mr. McKeegan, if you want a month, that's fine. And I'm going to extend the same request to anybody who is participating. If you're, if you think there are conditions that the board, and this is for anybody online as well, if you think there are conditions that we should be considering, we have to consider whether we're approving what has been proposed. But if you think there are conditions that we should consider as opposed to an outright denial, we would like to be aware of that as well. But if you could submit those, actually...
Pick a date, so there's no confusion.
Let's pick a date.
Yep.
Let's do that.
I propose Thursday, November 20th.
November 20th would be the week before Thanksgiving?
Yes.
Let's do that. Okay, November 20th it is for any post-hearing submissions. And we, and I'm going to just tell everybody in the room this as well, we may reach out to DOMI to see if they have any comments about the report that's been submitted or the...
And that's fine, they're familiar with Ms. Jampel, so that's fine.
Well, but it's also, they're familiar with street patterns, and we want to make sure that we take into account whatever concerns DOMI has.
Could I request, though, that if DOMI does respond, we have a chance to reply?
Absolutely let you know about.
Thank you.
Yes. Ms. Fitzgerald, has her hand raised? Ms. Fitzgerald, did you have a question?
Yes, I was listening from the cart earlier, so I wasn't able to take notes. I'd like to request that the modification to the parking variance be shared with us in writing, either by Mr. Shepke or...
I was going to say, if Mr. Shepke can reach out to you with what has been requested, and maybe Mr. McKeegan can as well.
I will.
But, you know, it is one of the things that we have to think about, and everybody's given us a lot to think about this morning, so we appreciate everybody's testimony and participation this morning. So we are going to close the hearing for the day, expecting any post-hearing submissions by November 20th.
And again, the record is open, so we did get some messages last night. I'll just send them to Daniel, and he can incorporate them. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Thank you all for being here this morning.